Good afternoon, everybody. Today is September 17th, 2024. It is now approximately 4:02 PM. We'll go ahead and start our work session topics. And number one is discussion of the amendment to Article Four, Section 4.2, the zoning map.
Thank you, sir. Steve Candler, Director of Development Services. So, um... Thank you, sir.
Just don't step out from around there.
Yeah, I know, right? Well, it doesn't go with the Skechers very well. So, we... Part of what we said we needed to do was update the zoning map. The physical zoning map that we have, we needed to update it. But also, Lee showed that we need to update the ordinance that describes the map, and that's that 4.2. So, we'll bring this up tonight, but that is an update from the county attorney. And then, we'll show you the map as well, and we'll need to adopt that. Now, this is part of the items that we needed to get done, you know, during the moratorium. Future land use map, got that done. The zoning map, we'll get that done. And so, this is just progress more towards those things that we need to get done. And you can see... Thank you, Samantha. The existing zoning map is up on the screen.
And this doesn't change anything. Unlike the future land use map, this is just what the current zoning is. And we wanted to make sure... This with the future land use map is also one of the components we have to include in the comprehensive plan update. And so, we just wanted to make sure that there was no questions on this. And we've actually found, or Steve's found some places where we've... We had to do a bunch of research to figure out what the actual zoning was for certain properties. We've cleared all those up, and so, now we've got... Now, we've got a good map that could be approved and signed by the chairman. So... But nothing changes on this map as to related to zoning or what could be zoned where. This is just a snapshot of where we are today.
And we're going to have a workshop with planning board, right?
Is this... This is... Is this as of the last... What was approved at the last meeting?
The meeting before that, yes.
So, we're going to have a workshop with planning board just to get their input or tell them about it as well?
I think we did have them look at this.
Okay, so they already looked at it?
And 4.2, both the map and the ordinance, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I want to let you know that in the future, anything that's conditional use... Excuse me. You're going to see as a reference, or say, conditional use AR1 to let you know, let the attorneys that do research know that there are conditional uses attached to that particular zoning district. So, if you see a CU when you click on it, that means there are conditions to it. You'll notice that there are.
So, this is just the present state of the county today?
That's right.
Well, we need to discuss the amendment adjacent to this?
Yeah, the amendment is what you see there. It's... Like I said, that was all the county attorney's language that he put in there to make sure that it was covered and what we need to have.
And thank you for doing that, Mr. County Attorney.
Any questions on the map? That looked pretty good. See the legend?
I can't read it, but what's percentage on there on our industrial?
4.9%.
4.9? Wow, so it's not 15%? Okay, I'll be ready. Be ready for the next meeting on that. Thank you, sir.
So, 4.9% of the entire county?
Is currently zoned industrial?
We had a expert that came to his first meeting, last meeting, and told us that we had 15% of our counties own industrial. So, I'll be glad to deliver the message.
Slightly less.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. If there's no other questions or...
You just want to move on and keep the flow?
Yeah, sure. I think Sarah's next.
The only thing about number two is it says consideration to approve, and I think it's just discussion instead of consideration. Just discussion, so you make your corrections on that if you have an agenda. I don't think we can consider anything in a work session.
No, because I was wondering why Stephanie was asking me about a staff report. It's okay. So, I know about... I think it's almost been about a year since the fall retreat where we originally had kind of talked about a volunteer paid time off policy. It was met with some good enthusiasm, so just kind of wanted to bring it up again, readdress, and just kind of see where you guys were at and your thoughts. So, there's a few questions I had for you on how we wanted to go with the direction. There's two different ways we could do this. We could limit it to just, you know, nonprofits within our own county. Or do we want to not limit it and say you could do something in Chatham or Bullock? Because we do have workers that come in from surrounding counties. So, I wasn't kind of sure if we wanted to be super strict. If you guys want to think about that, that's why I figured we'd talk about it in a workshop or give you some time, and if you have some feedback or questions for me, let me know. Yes, sir?
Personally, I think we need to keep it in Effingham County.
I like that, too, but, you know.
Because the...
We're paying for it.
I guess it's the tax... Yes, it's the taxpayer...
Yes, yes.
County taxpayers that are...
Yep, okay. That's good feedback, sure.
I wonder if we could come up to the mic if you had a suggestion, but I wonder if we could... Can we have a list, an approved list? I wonder if we could, if you had a suggestion, but I wonder if we could, uh, can we have a list, an approved list?
You could.
Maybe countywide that they could choose from, instead of just bringing one forward?
Yeah.
Well, as long as it's a five oh one C, I mean, if we, if we pick, then that's like, well, how'd you pick that one and not mine? I would think as long as it.
You need some kind of, where I'm going, where I'm going with that is like, how, would you vet them for validity? Do they really?
Oh, I got you.
What, what do they do? Do they keep a good budget? Do they, you know, different things like that? Somebody would have to look at it that way. We know we're putting our money in the right spots.
Okay.
For just from that side of it.
And, and a thought on that is, um, you know, a lot of these nonprofits, they don't keep up with their paperwork, um, and.
That too, I mean, you're gonna have.
We could make sure, you know, that, uh, if, if, you know, that, that we can research to make sure that they are up to date with the IRS. There's a database of it.
Yes.
And so, um.
Right, and there would be a request form, so they would have to submit to us who they wanna go to, if it's approved, what the project is, right? What they're gonna be doing there.
You could ask for budgets from them, you know, and to stay updated and order to stay on that list of volunteers, they need to submit budgets, uh, to the county so we can at least see they're, at least keeping books and doing the right thing and putting the right money in the right places.
Um, and then, so they would do the request form and have to be approved by a supervisor, come through the H. R. Office to make sure, again, it's on that approved list, right? Um, and then there's a post form too, to make sure that they really showed up, they did their eight hours, right? So they have to have somebody sign off, because, you know, someone could just wanna go on a vacation, right? And, and we don't want that. We don't wanna be taken advantage of, so we would have that also as a record and to put on file. And just kinda seeing where you guys, I, I started with two days, sixteen hours. Um, I think that's kinda standard in private industry and other government entities, so it, again, it kind of allows our employees to pursue their passions. Uh, a lot of people do live paycheck, paycheck right now, and so we always hear, well, I can't go to my kid's school to help because I, I gotta save my PTO for when they get sick. Valid point, it's true. Um, so this would allow them to maybe volunteer a day within the school so they could spend some time with their child and, you know, be involved. So we're kind of allowing them to still get that without having to worry about it affecting, you know, them paying their bills.
Right. Well, I love the idea overall, it's great.
You know, or if someone was really passionate about animals, you know, they could go help Ms. Lorna at the animal shelter, you know, or, you know, veterans groups. Backpack Buddies is a big one out here, you know, um, so.
Elections?
Four oh one C three, so that was pretty much my suggestion to say, you know, if we can use county employees that we wouldn't have to pay them, then, you know, that maybe we could tack onto this, or, or Vass' elections director is being selfish.
If we could loop all that together.
I think there's some tax implications. I don't know if I could do that. They're working, you know. You think they could clean volunteer? I mean, they're not gonna be able to, you know, work, work.
But I mean, you know, like, they wouldn't get paid through us, they'd still get their pay through the county, you know what I mean? It's almost like jury duty. Again, you know, 'cause if they can go over to the animal shelter and help.
Well, they're, they're probably cleaning. They're not like running a voting machine, so. Would you have them clean?
No.
Oh, well, see, yeah. Yeah, I think there's a difference, yeah.
Get into work instead of volunteering.
Yeah, so kinda just wanted to, you know, bring that back to your minds, um, and I wanted to share, you know, um, recently, Ms. Tashina closed on her house, and so if we had something like this in place, a long process, but she finally did it. And, you know, she went through Habitat for Humanity, and so we, we could have, you know, some of her coworkers, you know, could have volunteered and gotten paid to help. And so that's kinda pushed us again to bring this back to the forefront, so if you guys have some more questions, you know, shoot me an email. We can have a side conversation, but just kinda wanted to bring it back up, okay? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I told him I wouldn't take too long.
I don't have a list of who's talking about what. I just have the, the subject itself. Doesn't have the, the person, but I'm sure they'll chime in. Number three is discussion of the amendment to Article Five, five point eight, R. Six, Single Family Resident District of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
Thank you.
I figured that would be you.
Yes, it was, yes. So we keep, um, having our, our sixes, the cul-de-sac lots, um, are not, uh, meeting the sixty-foot standard. Not all of them, but a few of them, so we keep getting the requests for variance. So we decided that since this is, um, a retired, um, ordinance, um, we don't do R. Sixes anymore, that we thought that we would just go ahead and change the retired ordinance to say, instead of fifty-foot road frontage, I mean, sixty-foot road frontage, have it fifty-foot, so that we would, um, handle the cul-de-sac variances that keep coming up in front of everybody. Let me give you a list of the subdivisions that are zoned, R. Six that are still active. So Longley Village, I think their final plat for phase two is, yeah, coming tonight, and I think that's it. Samantha, that's it, right? Just phase one and phase two? Are they doing, yeah, so that'd be it. Uh, Buckingham Plantation, phase three, I think there's a phase four. The North Track, Lower Grove, just got started out on thirty, Lower Grove.
Okay.
Yeah, um, but they're all, all the plats are all the sixty feet, but it's just some of the cul-de-sacs are the, the ones that are in issue.
Let me, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Can they go back, if we pass this, can they go back and wiggle ten feet off all the current lots to try to create more lots? Is it just for the cul-de-sac areas?
Um, I would like to specify just for the cul-de-sac areas, if that's what you would like to do.
That's excellent, good. But even if they did that, would that kinda material change? I think they'd have to come back before the board for a site plan review, wouldn't they?
They would.
Would, but I don't even want that opportunity.
Yeah, true.
Right, 'cause that's what, yeah, we're just, take care of it.
Yeah.
Uh, so the Meadows, uh, Lone Dane, Lotte Dane, McCall Place, which I think is done, yeah. And then Blandford Crossing, I think that's done or close to being done. So, so it's not a lot that are left over, but there's a few, and we can specify in the ordinance that it's just the cul-de-sac lots.
Okay.
Have to have the fifty-foot.
Can be allowed to have.
Can be allowed to have fifty-foot. Now, um, some folks have already gone back and, and, um, redrawn everything. They were using the building setback line, but they've gone back and redrawn it to the sixty, um, foot that's already there. But it's, it's, it's just those paycheck cul-de-sac lots we're in trouble with.
Does it still address, well, we, we still need to include that it has to be sixty feet at the building light line, or not?
We do not, because that's already in the ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just the road frontage section that we're dealing with. So that's gonna, it'll come up tonight, okay?
Okay.
But, but if you, if you wanna keep it just cul-de-sac, please let's specify that, okay? And then we'll do the second reading at the October first meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Good one. Anyways, have any questions or comments on number three? Moving on to number four, so discussion of an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Article Seven, Planning Board and Section three point one five A, Residential Business.
Um, so as we had talked about, um, at the retreat, um, there was some desire to create some more efficiency in the process. Um, and so what we've come up with, um, and presented this to the planning board the other night was that the planning board will handle the rezonings, uh, will still do two public hearings, one at the planning board level and one at the commissioner level. The rezonings, um, are probably, um, the most dynamic that we have that the planning board reviews. And then, um, like we discussed before, the conditional uses, the variances, the text amendments, we'll have the public hearing at the commissioner level, um, and we'll have those, uh, done here. Of course, there's ponds and a few other things, but have those done at the commissioner level. So that'll create a lot more efficiency in the process for, um, the folks that, um, are trying to get the variances and things like that done. And so that's what you see in here, uh, the three point one five A residential business, so that's a real simple change. Uh, residential businesses were handled only by the planning board at the planning board level, and we just, it just, that one statement that says planning board, it'll just say county commissioner, whereas Article Seven was a, a bit more comprehensive. Um, you'll see the, in there that we also talked about, uh, the appointment of the planning board, we just changed, uh, the time. It's not anything else but the time. Uh, we refer to, uh, when that's done at the first, uh, meeting of the year. And then we also talk about the clerk to the planning board, I think it was called, um, secretary, uh, previously. And then, um, again, we just left the requirement in, uh, for the planning board to, to hear the rezonings. And then also, we included in there the authority given to the planning board is approve, deny, or take no action, um, at the meetings. Okay.
Any questions or comments?
Very straightforward.
I think so. Okay, moving on, number five, it's a discussion of an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Chapter thirty-eight, Health and Sanitation Related to Body Art.
Okay, there's, this is a two-part, um, that I wanna talk about. Uh, the first one is, uh, the Department of Public Health is here, they're gonna make a presentation about, uh, a statute that was passed last year in the, um, in the, the state legislature that addresses, uh, body art and all the associated, uh, services that go along with that, and I'll let them come up, and then I'll discuss something after that.
Sure.
On that previous map you showed about the industrial with four point nine percent, are we gonna be able to post that on our website at some point?
Yes, sir.
Just so people see that.
Soon as it's passed.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Ready for that one, aren't you? You're ready for that, aren't you?
Ready for this presentation.
Hey, how y'all doing? I'm Stephen Andrews with the Health Department, Environmental Health. Um, this is Bran Phelps, he's our Environmental Health District Director. Um, I don't know much about doing a, a big presentation, but, uh, this was a rule that was passed by, um, the state of Georgia back in two thousand and twenty-three, uh, March of twenty-three. Um, we're asking it to be approved by you guys on a local level, so it'll help me to be able to enforce, uh, the rules on the local level. The Board of Health pa, uh, passed these rules as well back in, uh, February, um, of, of this year. And Chairman Corbett is on the Board of Health. Um, let's see, we're asking also a fee proposal, uh, five hundred dollars for a, uh, um, studio and a hundred dollars for guest, um, guest artists, so we can actually charge folks. Um, and let's see what else. And again, it'll help us enforce these rules on, on a level that I can, I can enforce.
What's the fee for now? Is this per year, like?
It's per year.
Like a permit, or?
For, for a, but body art permit.
It, it'll put it on a rotation like we do with restaurants, hotels, and swimming pools. It's just a fee we charge to go out and do inspections of the facility.
How is that compared to other fees? Five hundred dollars, you come in and, I don't, I don't have any tattoos, I don't know anything about that stuff.
It's applicable to other counties.
Okay.
It's the same fee to Chatham.
How do we stack up?
Yeah, it's applicable to like Chatham County and other, other surrounding counties here.
They did, they did the guest thing as well, the thousand-dollar guest artist.
Sir.
They did the thousand-dollar guest artist fee as well.
Hundred dollars.
It's a hundred dollars.
Yes, a hundred dollars.
We need to do a field trip.
And we can do, hey, there's a big event in Chatham County actually starting Friday. They're having a big tattoo convention, so.
Well, there you go, Jamie.
We're gonna all make a trip down there.
But that's all it's for, is the, currently it's a state rule, so if we were to try to enforce anything, we'd have to take them to state court, and that's a prolonged. But by adopting it locally and making it a local code, we're able to utilize the magistrate court, and we can get things done in a timely manner.
Makes sense, makes sense.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to, uh, number six, discussion of an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Chapter thirty-eight, Health and Sanitation, Section thirty-eight point one and thirty-eight point two.
Um, so in our current ordinance, um, it does address, um, under Articles, uh, excuse me, Section thirty-eight, it does address that we don't allow any, uh, tattoos or any body art of any kind. So for this to go through, we would have to, uh, eliminate, um, most of Chapter thirty-eight.
I mean, we have an ordinance that.
Says, yeah, you can't.
Can't have a tattoo.
No, no.
You have to lock up half the county.
So, don't, don't be showing us something that, you know, you're not supposed to.
Coming, coming, chairman.
Yeah. So, yeah, I can't be responsible for it having before my arrival, but, yeah, it's in there, so we would need to do that. And then Ms. Stephanie, um, will have, she, she put in there where we're gonna drop that in, or it's under state laws, I think, yeah.
Well, Lee, you can get your tattoo now.
This is not permissible, it's not giving people permission to have a tattoo, it's permission to get one.
Yes.
Just to be clear.
That is correct.
It's not legal to have a, you'll have Facebook messages about it being illegal to have a tattoo.
I know, I didn't mean that, for mercy.
See you coming already. Any questions or comments?
And I think Stephen did mention it was passed by the Health Board too, so, okay.
All right, moving on to number seven, it's a discussion of an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Appendix F, Overlay Districts, Section One, Commercial Corridors.
Yes, uh, thank you, sir. So we, um, hired Inspire, uh, which is a vendor that we've used in the past, and they worked on the corridor overlay district. Uh, we're talking, um, the east side of Hogsville, Effingham Parkway, twenty-one, um, from the county line to Rincon, and then, um, on the other side of Rincon to Springfield, using the, the Springfield, um, what they already have in place for their corridor standards, and.
What about eighty?
And Effingham Parkway, right.
Is there any discussion about eighty? I know we were talking about making that a commercial.
Yeah, we, we, we do, but, um, we, we're gonna add it in later, um, because, uh, we've, um, applied for a corridor study with, um, to get funding to do a corridor study with the NPO, uh, and so the standards might be different, so we're gonna wait till those results come out and then match those recommendations with, uh, with whatever we put in for, uh, as an additional, uh, commercial corridor area.
So these are, these, these standards are landscaping setbacks, uh, all those kinds of things that are aesthetically pleasing when you drive by on, on a corridor, and so that's what's in there. I will say that I have received a lot of really positive feedback from this, and there's some suggestions for incorporating some of the feedback. And so it's on the agenda for tonight, but I'm, I'm gonna request that you just, um, table it for about thirty days. Let me incorporate some of those changes and bring it back to you again. We can advertise it again. There was just, there's some really good feedback that we got, which I'm, I'm happy for. I just need to include it in there. But this is, this is a really good overlay, um, corridor to really look, when you first come into county, it's gonna, it's gonna create quite the aesthetic value that we, that we wanna give in the county.
Now, are we looking at the, um, Parkway corridor as well, or this is just strictly coming into the county?
Effingham Parkway?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, the whole road.
Okay, just the reason why I ask is I think the same engineer talked with you previously. I think he brought up a good point that, um, you know, on paper, it looks good, but the elevation change, eight to twelve feet on the Parkway and then coming down.
Those are some of the changes I'm having to look at. I'm actually, he's promised me a ride down the Parkway. Oh. I didn't say that, but somehow I'm gonna get down the Parkway, because it's gonna, it's gonna matter, the elevation changes that.
Yeah, and, and his point was, hey, I, I get what y'all are trying to do, but just wanna make sure, you know, y'all have got a real-world, you know, application.
Right.
Which I appreciated this comment, 'cause I hadn't.
I mean, if you got a standard, you know, you're sitting out there looking at it, and you're looking up, you know, ten, like the twenty-one bridge going over, and you can see both sides. That's a good example right there.
Yeah.
So those are some of the things we wanna look at. I, I, it's, there's some really good ideas.
Okay.
So that's what, so when it gets to it on the agenda, that's kinda what I hope you, you guys could look at doing. Thank you.
Okay.
I think it may be a good idea to table something like that, 'cause, and get more word outs, and get more input.
Sure.
From the public. Love to see some more of that. We wanna involve everybody, developers, the public.
Again, I, I, it's a really good constructive, helpful feedback. Nobody has said, no, we weren't looking, you know, anything at all. They just said, hey, while you're doing it, can you do this too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, yeah, I don't think we have anything else, if you want to come on up.
Well, I wanted to comment on that.
Oh, yes, sir, please.
I'd like to suggest that, and I appreciate that we're going to delay it, I mean, I hope y'all are going to go along with Steve's recommendation of not taking action on it tonight, but that the particular property owners who are affected be notified and have a chance to come meet with staff at a meeting that is specifically for them, because a lot of people who are affected by it aren't in the development or real estate business, they really don't know this is going on yet, whether it's positive for them or negative for them. But if that can be incorporated, and it might take more than thirty days to pull that off, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Any suggestions on the best way to get the communication out to everybody, so we get more participation in things like this?
A letter?
A letter directly to the.
To each one of them?
The owners or potential.
Yeah, each property owner, I mean, it's easy to, you know, pull that up on the website, I mean, excuse me, on the internet, from the county to record.
Maybe people in surrounding.
You know, well, you're affecting five hundred feet off of the right-of-way line, so you just draw the line and send a notice to each one of them and say, we're going to have a meeting here or wherever it's going to be, particular date, particular time, and give them a chance to, and send them a copy of whatever it is, you know, is being proposed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good idea, thank you.
That's all I have, sir.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments? I know we're a little bit early. Could we?
I don't think we can do anything for the meeting.
What about reports from? You couldn't do that? Oh, I said, because it's not advertised, okay. Just trying to expedite the process. All right, so I guess we'll take a break, if anybody has anything else, this work session is adjourned.